My message. Waiting for.
Have it turn on your mic.
I'd like to call this meeting to order Independent School District number 832, regular board meeting on Thursday, October 28th at seven something. Seven seventeen, thank you. We'll start with a roll call of attendance, please.
Done.
Thank you.
Next, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Oh, that's fast. Moved by Stacy, second by Kevin. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Thank you, Tony. Moved by Tony, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the items on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, oh, nay. Motion carries, just had to make sure. We'll start with presentations and recognitions, starting with Teacher of the Year. And Gary is doing the presentation tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Gary. I'm a teacher at the high school. I'm also the chairperson of the Montamita Teacher of the Year Committee. And on behalf of that committee and the Montamita Education Association, it's such a pleasure to be here tonight for your recognition of the 2021-2022 Teacher of the Year, Shelley Mitchell. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Shelley and why I admire her so much and how happy, I'm so happy to be here presenting her. Shelley is in her 22nd year as the Districtwide Developmental Adapted Physical Education Specialist. She works with kids in all of our buildings, many starting from preschool all the way through their completion at Montamita Schools. In August, many of us were at the district-wide, well, all of you were, at the district-wide kickoff during workshop week. And Shelley was the keynote speaker, and we can all acknowledge that's, that is a big task, very nerve-wracking, to speak in front of a large crowd of your peers. But Shelley's speech was certainly the perfect way to start the school year. Her moving and heartfelt speech about her experiences and the special connections she has with her students and their families, I think everybody can agree, was very inspirational. Hearing Shelley talk about supporting students as they strive to work to the best of their abilities was a message that every one of us can take to heart and learn from. When asked about what she considers to be her greatest contribution or accomplishment in the field of education, Shelley says, "By gaining my students' trust and refocusing their attention on their strengths and potential, I believe my greatest contribution to my students is instilling in them a sense of accomplishment as well as a pathway to their success." I have known Shelley for many, many years. We are both Montamita High School graduates. And I've always admired her very much, her kindness, her integrity, and the absolute dedication she has to her family, to our community, and to her students at Montamita Schools. It is with such great pride that I introduce her for this recognition this evening.
You're welcome.
Everybody, I don't really want to take a whole lot of time tonight to say all the things that Amy just said about me and all the things that are going on within my teaching, but I take such pride in this recognition, and I feel very honored. And I, my heart goes out to all the families and the kids and the people in this community that love our kids and want the best for them. So, thank you very much. I'm just really honored to be here tonight. So, thank you, Board, School Board. Thank you.
Everything out of order.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a report from our student representative.
So, throughout the community, our Montamita community has given our schools high marks. In a community survey conducted by Morris Leatherman in May 2021, 93% of the community members rated the quality of Montamita Public Schools as excellent or good, and said that they are proud of our schools and would recommend them to a friend. Okay, so there's a lot going on right now. So, at Wildwood Elementary, on October 20th, staff and students were ordained to celebrate Unity Day and to promote kindness at Wildwood. There will be no school on November 2nd. It is Staff Development Day. Conferences are coming up. So, conferences will be held in person November 11th and November 18th from 4:00 to 8:00. And then there will be virtual conferences on November 12th from 8:00 to 4:00. There will be no school that day, lucky us. So, families will get more information on this and how to sign up for conferences. At OH Anderson, they also celebrated Unity Day to first students and to show kindness around OH. The PTO run at OH was a success. The fun run this year was outside with obstacle courses and fitness pit stops that included running, jumping, football kick, dancing, sack races, and a ball throw. Pictures are on the latest public news. November 20th was Nature Trail Day, where they learned a lot about different types of nature. They had speakers of live animals, mapping, looking for camouflage animals, dissecting owl pellets, nature trail scavenger hunts, and painting on the prairie. So, fun event for the kids. November 11th to 18th will be the PTO Book Fair at OH. November 11th and 18th will be evening conferences in person from 4:00 to 8:00. And then November 12th, they will be holding virtual conferences. At the middle school, the fall play is playing on the 29th, which is today. And then at 7:00 PM, and then tomorrow at 2:00 PM, or excuse me, on the 29th of the fall play, and then the 30th, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The fall play is called Catch the Wave, sounds interesting. November 2nd was picture, or will be picture retake day. Evening conferences are on the 4th and the 11th, 3:30 to 7:30 in gyms. Daytime conferences will be on the 12th, daytime conference at 7:30 to 11:30 AM. Again, no school. The school fundraiser will also be kicking off on October 8th. And they will be having their book fair on November 10th to November 12th. So, the high school is also having their conferences on the 4th and the 11th. And then there will also be conferences held on the 12th, 7:30 to 11:30 AM. Some kind of government clubs are starting at our school. So, state and international government simulation clubs will be starting during flex times. Youth and Government is a hands-on learning program where students take on the role of judges, attorneys, legislators, lobbyists, media representatives, or cabinet members, and spend four days running a model government at the Minnesota State Capitol Complex. Model UN also will start taking place. And basically, students work as ambassadors and UN officials in simulated international diplomacy. Mystical over the social studies teacher kind of runs those clubs. I know that Model UN started last year. I have a few friends who decided to participate in that. But the Youth and Government is the first that I'm hearing of it, but it sounds very interesting. Senior pictures and senior quotes are, should be submitted by November 1st. Good reminder for me. You do need to buy your yearbooks ASAP and the full musical, which is called Chicago. Basically, jazz roaring twenties, crime kind of thing is going to be running from November 18th to the 21st. And then I also thought it'd be interesting to have kind of a sports update, because as you probably know, a lot of our sports are doing very well. So, boy soccer, they are going to be heading to their state semifinals. Girl soccer, they had a game tonight, state quarterfinals. Last time I checked, they were three and oh to them. So, hopefully, it stayed that way. Girls cross country, they placed first in their conference and placed first in their section. So, they will be heading to state for the first time. Boys cross country also placed third in their conference and placed second in their sections, and they will also be heading to state. So, volleyball, they won their section game only playing on Monday, which will be their second section game. Swim and dive, their JV conference is tomorrow, and their varsity section is in about two weeks. And they will find out if they can get to state from there. And finally, football, we'll be having their second section game on Saturday. And hopefully, they win, and we can move on.
Oh, that's a lot. I love your balance of academics and extracurricular activities, because the academics are very important. And so, it's good to hear about those things. It's also good to hear about the other fun things going on. So, thank you for that.
I appreciate the up-to-date soccer score.
All right, superintendent's report.
Yes, and I have a couple slides. Am I pulling those up? I don't know what the new setup is. You're, you're doing that? Okay, sorry, I didn't know. Okay. And as always, I have a couple of things that overlap with Cholo. So, let's see. So, overview, I'm going to give you some pictures of around the district, what's happening. I know everyone likes to hear about our COVID-19 data and how to take these calls home. I'll give you some updates about the structure of the quarantine. And then a reminder about the schedule of the design. Oh, I need to be near my mic, I'm sorry. Bring it with me. You've seen some of these in our e-news, I think. But we have our semifinalist students and our commended students who recently announced for the National Merit Program. We have our, our pictures there of our, our teams that are going to, they're advancing to state or playing in the state tournament. And you may also, if you, I don't know if it was in the district e-news or just the high school e-news, our Zephyr Wind Ensemble. Did that go into the district-wide e-news or was it in the high school one? Oh, so you'll get to see, and so is Ms. Goucher going to be in the district one, her video? You'll need to listen to Ms. Goucher get to talk about the band, because no, she's just all sorts of enthusiastic. And so, she can talk to, talk about this more. But ours, Zephyr Wind Ensemble, was selected, selected for one of the highest honors, and that is to play at the Minnesota Music Educators Association Conference. And, and it's really quite something. And she can, she speaks more to it in the video, but, but it's, it's a very high honor for our band. Couple other pictures, Cholo mentioned. We had our fun runs at, at the elementaries, and we had so many parent volunteers. It was fabulous, all the parent volunteers out there for those fun runs. And so, we're very thankful, all the parents out there dancing with the kids as well. When I was there, it was pretty fun. Also, our nature day, it was Wildwood, sorry, OHA Nature Day. One thing you may not know about there, you have those pictures of our middle school students. We do have a student help desk happening now with staff by middle school students helping other students with their Chromebooks and other computer problems. And we finally got to go to DC. Those students there are students who are ninth and 10th graders who would have gone on the eighth grade DC trip, but it got postponed and postponed. So, they finally got to go over MEA break. And so, I know that that was a fabulous trip, and everyone had a great time. So, I know it was a slightly different experience than other times when the, because they had a different itinerary, but they still had an excellent time. Um, can we move that little, my little, this little box here, Patrick, so that people can see that? Thank you. So, one of the things, again, we, we had talked about that we would let our, our families know on last week, October, the week of October 18th, if there were going to be any changes. And so, we sent something out saying that there aren't any changes now. We had talked about October 18th originally, back when we set that date. It was back in August, when our public health, public health experts anticipated that we would be through the peak and on our way back down, and it might be a good time to be talking about changes to our protocols. That's not the case right now. We're still on a very high transmission level in Washington County rate. And so, I just want to reiterate, our district's priorities are keeping kids safe and learning in person this school year. I do talk to Washington County and MDH, our public health officials, on a regular basis. I did this time as well, and we do want to be able to see that county transmission going down. I asked specifically, I knew people would want some more specifics, I'm trying. And at the same time, know that all these things kind of play together. Vaccination rates, low building case rates, and county transmission rates are all play together. I did try to get as more specific as I could, talking about that three weeks of downward trend is an important, would be, and we talked about this actually last year too, when we were coming in and out. We talked about seeing a few weeks of trending data going in the right direction. So, that's my best attempt at getting more specific for you. We're not seeing at that, at this time, we are still seeing. We're just kind of maintaining at a high level in Washington County. Just a reminder of, of what we are doing in terms of exposure email notifications. By universal masking policy allows us to avoid quarantining full classrooms. Again, we've, we did say that we committed to reviewing the protocols the week of October 18th, and so, that's what we did, but there just weren't any changes at that time. One thing I will say, I did talk about all of this with our public health officials, both at Minnesota Public Health and, and Washington County Public Health this week. And they are citing our layered mitigation for our low positive case numbers in our school. I did go through that with them. One of the things we know is that, as we went through this, that families and students who are on quarantine really needed consistent communication about what those plans were going to be while under quarantine. So, one thing that we have worked on recently as a district-wide team is now each school has established communication letters for families that detail the learning and support that are going to be provided during quarantine. And so, that's consistent. We knew that families were getting that information, but according by building, it might have been slightly different. And if you had a few students home at the same time under quarantine, we worked on making that more uniform. And so, each building has outlined the staff responsibilities, who's doing what, and the support provided to students, which includes the communication, learning platform, as well as return to school support. So, we've improved that communication for all of our students. One of the other things we've worked on is, in order to address the support the students at the secondary levels need during quarantine, because they have so many different teachers and subject areas, is that we have hired part-time staff who are going to kind of coordinate that ongoing communication support while students are in quarantine. So, that's something else that we've added recently. And this, does this say secondary redesign at the top of that? Under there, Patrick, is that what the title is, secondary redesign? If I go back. Thank you, that's what that says under there. Um, so, just as a reminder, we've talked about this already, but I wanted to circle back to it, because Stacy, you had brought up something about our communication with this. So, during the strategic planning process, again, the schedule came up repeatedly as being a barrier at the secondary level, barrier to achieving our district and school-level missions. So, right now, we have a design team made up of staff members from the middle school and high school. And they're meeting, and they're going to be gathering feedback from our staff, students, and families about the current secondary schedule. And to that end, we do have a survey that will be going out. We're still working on finalizing. It'll be going out the week of, of November 8th. The intent of the survey is to understand the current experience, what we currently notice about our schedule. However, there is an informational video at the beginning that I think will address what you were talking about, Stacy, about how many, what it is we're really after. And I think it will do both, point out what it is we're after in a way that's accessible, and still, the conversation, the survey is really to understand what the current situation is. So, I think we've addressed that. And then finally, you should have gotten this in your mail recently, or you will soon. It's our annual report, and this came specifically out of Strategy 3. And this has been something Alice Soifert, our communications specialist, has been working on for a while now, to put this together, to get this annual report going. So that, and again, it comes straight out of Strategy 3, and it was part of one of her goals, that meaningful and intentional communication between the district and community, increased awareness of the district's strategic plan, and that Montamita Public Schools has common language, common understanding, and message continuity related to mission and objectives. So, this is right out of the Strategy 3 Action Plan that was written. And it's also on the website. And I think those were the parts of my superintendent report I wanted to share with you.
I just wanted to give special thanks to Alice and the team, because when that came home a couple days ago, it was a really wonderful documentary. Very clear, very informative, and really showcased what we're doing at Montamita School. So, thank you for that, Alice.
Barb, my question is for you about COVID testing. I'm curious if the kids that we talked about last time about receiving, if they are, if families are taking advantage of that.
Families definitely are taking advantage of them. I can't quantify how many have gone out, but the intent with those is to send those home with symptomatic students. Or if a student is staying at home with symptoms, and a parent can come and pick it up. Yeah, we're happy that people are staying home when they have symptoms, that's great. And we want to know, we want them to be able to get that information quickly about whether or not it's COVID, and then how to move forward. And so, we have been having families take advantage of that, so. We're also looking into, we've applied for, I don't know if it's a grant. I'm looking at Nicole, is it a grant to get those same tests for staff? Or is it just a request? How does that work? It was, was it a grant, or was it free that you found those tests for staff potentially? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to jump on your presentation. Yep, okay. Kelly, go ahead.
My question was the one same one with Julie asked about the testing. I was wondering if you could create a little bit about that if somebody missed that, and how to get that, because I thought, what I thought was great about that is, if a student takes that test, what do they do with those results? And how fast can they return back to school if that test is negative? So, I'm just wondering if anybody missed that, and I wonder how many people are using it. Julie asked that question.
And so, you, so, it depends on symptoms. We, we don't want students coming to, to school sick, obviously. But if they find that, so the binax test, what it is, is that you take one, you take another one 36 hours later, and that helps with the reliability of, of the tests. And so, looking at that with the, when they get those negative tests, then that, that ensures. And, and because we're sending them home, we ask them to give those results to us.
Yeah, and I guess maybe I wasn't clear on my question. Let's say that it's not a student who hasn't had them, that they've been in contact with somebody who's had COVID, and so, they can get one of those tests to be, to take that as well, right? To, and then see that.
We're, we're not using those right now because of our universal masking. So, we don't quarantine, if a student is in close contact at school, because of our universal masking policy, we don't quarantine students. So, it's only for the, that binax is only for symptomatic students who are, are going home or staying home. And the only students that are quarantined are those who are ill or those who are, are in household with someone who has tested positive.
The close contact rules are what we're.
Right.
But I wondered about the testing. I didn't know that was only for students.
That's how we're using it right now. Mm-hmm.
Follow-up on that, in case it was not, in case it was missed by some, our previous mentioning of it. Those are free to everyone, and those were free to the district.
That's correct. Yep.
I, I did have a question on the secondary schedule redesign. Thank you for putting together the video to give context. I think that really helps in people understanding what they're getting surveyed about and why. The other piece of that is, will, will it be made, or is this, will this be part of it, looking at, we talked about engaging more voices and more family voices. Will that come through that survey? Will people have a, a place there to say, yes, I want to be part of this process?
Oh, to, to find out if they want to be part of the focus groups once they do that. I think we could probably add that in.
That'd be great, thank you.
I just don't think we've gotten that far. We've really been working on the survey, but thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you for all those updates. That's wonderful. Now, we're going to go into discussion and information items, starting with the board member calendar. Are there items on the calendar that people would like to call out? I'm a calendar person, so I always have a list. I do want to call out that on the calendar, it has our next board meeting on Thursday, November 10th. But when we approved the consent agenda 15, 20 minutes ago, that now changed that meeting to Wednesday, November 9th at 7:00 o'clock, because we can't meet on Veterans Day.
I see Leslie's eyes in the corner. I think we have a combination.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have my dates wrong, but the days of the week, right?
We just, and we have it a little bit off on this calendar, so we'll just fix that.
Right, but so, just so the public knows, we meet on Wednesday next month, not on Thursday, because of Veterans Day. Okay, and that'll be updated. November 17th is AMSD Policy Conference. And I'm sure Tony was going to talk about that in his report. Sorry, take that from you, Tony. If you're not registered, please let Leslie know as soon as possible, if you'd like to attend that. And then, on December 3rd at AMSD, they will have a speaker looking at the history of education, what's called the Long Now. It's tied to some work I'm doing with the School Board Association. Dr. Yuhuru Williams from the Racial Justice Initiative will be coming to speak to that group. It should be a very powerful talk that day. And so, if you're not currently getting those emails, would like to attend that, let Tony or I know, we'll forward that to you. It should be a very good talk that morning. Other things. Good, Kevin.
Just a comment, when I look at this calendar and some other meetings that I've been in, is I think that it should be said just how engaged this board is on all these extra meetings and opportunities for further learning with MSBA and their learning module series and all the different things that are listed. And I think that maybe that isn't seen as much. But when I go to some of these meetings, that most, a lot now are on Zoom. But when I look at how many Montamita School Board members attend compared to our other, other districts around, we really should be proud of the work that this board is doing on other than sitting in these chairs at this time. It is significant, and I don't know, you know, we read them out, but I don't know if people fully grasp just how much is going on here for the benefit of the students of this district.
When I attend things, there are a number of us usually in attendance, and we're involved with all different groups. So, that's a nice thing to call out, Kevin, thank you. Anything else? Julie, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to call out something that was in the paper, and it's a ways off. But it's Sunday, April 24th, and there was just an article in the paper about Deb Driscoll and Mindy Meyer, who will be inducted into the Minnesota State High School League Hall of Fame. And Deb Driscoll for being a gymnastics coach for 43 years, and Mindy Meyer for being the only gymnast in state history to capture four All-Around Championships. So, remarkable, Zephyr Stories.
Great, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have our audit report. Jeff.
Good evening. So, we have another report for the board that's, did I turn that on? That's clear and fun to read, and that's, that's our annual audit report. So, I think in the last month or so, I've updated the board on some of the numbers that we'll see tonight in the, in the report. And I mentioned that we are going to receive an unmodified position, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and best opinion that the district can receive. You'll see continued financial improvement within the general fund. And I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Iken from MMKR, from our audit, audit firm. And I've got, last year, some of you wanted hard copies. I've got a few, does anybody want, you want one, two? I probably brought five, so I'll get them.
Members of the Board Superintendent, my name is Jim Iken, MMKR CPAs. I'm the managing partner with the firm here this evening to provide a presentation on the audit for the district. The district is required to have an annual financial report prepared, and that financial report has been issued. It's actually a comprehensive annual financial report, which is about 128 pages long. It provides a lot of great information for the district, specifically on this year's financial activities, but also many pages of trend information that go back about 10 years in many cases. So, I did provide a PowerPoint, let's see if my clicker worked, there we go, on the audit process this year and some of the results of that particular process. So, it is a requirement, as I mentioned, that the district prepare an annual financial statement. It's the role of the auditor to provide opinions on those financial statements. The district's audit opinion will be, I'll address that in a little bit. We also, as part of the audit process, are required to complete our audit, including the audit of your internal controls and your compliance with the variety of laws and regulations that specifically relate to financial statement that was issued. Part of the audit process that's guided by the federal government Part of the audit process that's guided by the federal government is called the Single Audit of Federal Awards. The district receives more than the limited amount as required by the single audit. So we are required to complete that process on an annual basis. And then lastly, we audit your compliance with state laws and regulations. The, the state laws that we test are guided by the Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota. We don't audit every state law. Just the laws that are provided on a list by the Office of the State Auditor. So as part of my audit process, I do issue what's called the Management Report. I believe the Management Report was provided to the, the board this evening. And in that audit report, you'll find the audit results for the year. First and foremost, as Jeff mentioned, we did issue what's called an unmodified opinion on your comprehensive financial report. I have in my slide the word clean. I like the word that use that word better than unmodified. It gives a better sense as to what, what it truly is. It was the opinion you were looking for going into this particular audit process. And certainly it comes with appropriate opinion for the financial statements. As I relate, I talked about the internal control testing that we do. There is a reportable item in that particular opinion regarding the limited segregation duties within the business office. I, I mentioned that it is a reportable item specifically because the board should be aware that we, we completed our audit under this guidance of the, of the limited segregation duties. It would portray that this is not really a finding, but more of an item that the board should be aware of that we are operating in our audit on these, under the context that you don't have perfect segregation duties in the financial reporting sense. So as part of our audit, we go in into depth and looking for what we define as compensating internal controls, other controls that are put in place to compensate for some of the limited segregation duties you have in, in the various accounting areas. So certainly no concerns there and no action really needed to be taken on that particular item. I mentioned the Single Audit of Federal Awards. The district received a significant increase in federal awards this year with additional pandemic-related funding coming to the district. Give you some sort of context, the Single Audit of Federal Awards included an audit of about two point eight million dollars of federal awards. In the previous year, you received about one point two million of federal awards. So there was a significant increase in federal awards. And with that came significant increase in requirements and some of the testing that we did in that particular area. As you can see on the board, that there were no findings to report in that Single Audit of Federal Awards. I will give some sort of context that is unusual for this year in the audit sense. I've been to several, well, not several, but I've reviewed several audits this past year, and most, most districts are having findings in that area just because you're getting more funding. And with that comes additional requirements. So very excellent result in that stand. Lastly, we, as I mentioned, did not have any findings to report in the, your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. So to summarize, the compliance portion of the audit, as you can see, we did not have any findings to report and really don't have any recommendations or corrective actions that need to be taken in, in the compliance areas. So more forward to the second part of the audit, which is really the financial results and some sort of the trend information that come out, comes out of that particular item. I'm going to get to that one a little bit later. And this is a, a, a particular graph that gets into some of this information specifically on the trend lines in the revenue area. In my management report, we provide a lot of information on revenue and expenditure trends of the district, and this is just one graph, as you can see. This particular graph reflects that the district received revenues of about fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars per student, which was an increase over the previous year of fifteen thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. You can see in that particular graph, some of the trends that occurred. I mentioned the federal dollars. Already, you received, this particular year, you received about five hundred and fifty-two dollars per student. When you look at the two previous years, it was only about two hundred dollars per student. Some of the state revenues actually increased specifically in the area of special education. You can see some of the other areas are impacted by the pandemic, and it's specifically in the area of community service. The Community Service Fund due to the pandemic saw a significant decline in some of its overall revenues and program activities that were occurring. On the expenditure side, we do provide information on the expenditures on a, on a per-student basis. You can see the district spends about sixteen, excuse me, fifteen thousand four hundred dollars per student annually. These particular categories, as you can see, are broken down into general fund program areas, as well as some of the other program areas, food service, community service, and the like. The district did see some increases in expenditures in the general fund. A large percentage related to the slight decline in the number of students that you had, again, pandemic-related. With that decline, the overall expenditures on average did increase. You saw some increases as well in instructional support services specifically related, again, to the pandemic and some of the changes that were made in reaction to the learning opportunities or the learning needs of the students going back to twenty twenty-one. Lastly, I did mention, again, the Community Service Fund, as you might expect, that the overall expenditures in that particular fund went down. Again, basically less programming occurring. So we did get, we do in my management report, provide information on individual fund activity. You can see, as Jeff mentioned, this is the general fund financial position graph. We like to focus on the yellow line, which is the overall fund balance at the end of the year. The district's total fund balance didn't increase. I think that's actually unrestricted fund balance did increase to six point three million dollars at the end of twenty twenty-one, which is an increase of four point, from four point six million the year before. This particular graph and the overall fund balance of the district is guided by a, we just go to the next one, actually. This is probably better. This particular presentation does show those, that same data in a, in a number format. And you can see the total fund balance in the general fund increased to seven million dollars, an increase from the five million dollar level in twenty twenty. You can see in that particular graph, there are some percentages, and those percentages are provided because they do correlate to a fund balance policy the district has. The district's fund balance policy, as stated, strives to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of eight percent of operations, eight percent of expenditures. You can see at the bottom percentage there that the, at the end of the year, the unassigned fund balance was roughly ten percent of operations or ten percent of expenditures. So you are certainly within or exceeding that particular minimum standard that you have in your fund balance policy. And certainly, probably the most important number that I can provide this evening is that one. And certainly, if you were here a few years ago, and maybe two, three years ago, and go back to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, you could see some percentages there that were below that particular eight percent policy. So certainly some very positive trend lines in the general fund financial position of the district. We do provide more information on individual general fund revenues and expenditures. I'm not going to get into all of this in detail for sake of brevity. But I will highlight a couple of items that is important. When I do an audit, one of the things that I look for is accuracy in terms of information to budget. And certainly during my audit process, we find that the district does an excellent job of budget, budgeting. And the actual audit results do adhere to those particular items. And if it doesn't adhere, we typically ask questions about that and are getting, getting very good information as to, well, why is that occurring? And so I like to put these presentations up here to, to, to reflect on that. And you can see here in this particular graph, the district has an overall operation of forty-three million dollars in operating results, and the, the final budget came within four hundred thousand dollars of that forty-three million dollar budget. And, and, which reflects, you know, certainly the, the closeness of the operating results and the final results to those budgeted items. That is even given the fact that the other revenues, as you can see up there, were significantly low budget, budget due to the pandemic and some of the participation activities, some of the related fees that relate to activities were significantly below the expectations. That can also be said in the expenditure area in the sense of, when you look at this particular graph, almost every category was impacted by COVID nineteen and some of the changes in operating results. You know, other expenditures, supplies and materials, purchase services, transportation, all of those, you know, salaries, benefits. All of those particular activities were impacted by the change in, in operations at the district. Overall, the final budget was about one point five million dollars. Final results were about one point five million dollars less than, than budget. And really is accumulation of almost all of those categorical areas. So the district does have other operating funds that I want to touch on. You can see here the, the two that are probably the, the most significant in Food Service Fund and the Community Service Fund. Both did see increases in fund balances. Both have about a fund balance as a percentage of operations of about thirty-three to thirty-seven percent in that range. So the equity position in those funds are seeing adequate, if not improving, operative results as well. So with that, I'm going to summarize the audit. We did, were you able to provide a clean opinion on that comprehensive annual financial report? I'm excited to hear that several of you want to get a paper version of it, cites an auditor like me. I did want to reflect that, that we did have the one reportable item that is not a concern regarding segregation duties. The district can anticipate that they'll receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, given the document. I talked about the general fund financial position, as well as the Community Service and Food Service Fund improving. And lastly, I just want to reflect on one other item regarding the timeliness of reporting. One of the aspects that took as a finding last year was related to the timeliness of reporting and the, in the comments regarding a finding in that nature. As I stood here last year, we, we stated that, that finding was, had gone away already, just at the time. But that was repeated again this year. When I'm standing here this evening, it's whatever, late October, I'm generally here in December. I'm here two months earlier than I typically am. That's a sign of timeliness of reporting. That's a trip, that can be attributed to many factors, probably not me, but the staff here at the district and the finance office really taking a dedicated approach to making sure you have the financial information you need on a timely basis. And that's reflective of this audit report being really one of the first audit reports that I've done, if not the second in, in terms of my work. So they can all be committed, not only for clean audit reports, no findings, but also very timely in their work. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions you might have for me.
I mean, go ahead, please.
How many years have you been doing?
Been a few. I, I don't know right off the top.
Well, I guess the point I was trying to make is the segregation of duties has been something that's come up every year, I think since I've been on the board sixteen years. I mean, it's just been a thing. Yeah, I think it's.
Every year that I've been the auditor, yeah.
And other districts, other organizations, other nonprofits, it's a similar, similar thing. And I think it's important to call out that when we are aware, if we were to fully do that, we'd have to add another one person to, I'm not quite sure, but at least one more.
At least one.
Person, right? At an expense. And, but it's also true that if we know that we have this segregation of duties thing, Jeff and team can then go about making sure that all the checks and balances are in place to prevent, right? Okay, I, I just think that's, you know, you look at that, you go, oh, you know, but it is, it is something that we're aware of. And it's something that is handled in a way to maintain that we do have that. Correct?
Okay, the segregation duties is, comes down to really a cost of, of, of operations. To, to have that adequately segregated, you would have, you have to reevaluate, number one, your controls and figure out, well, is it one, is it two? They really haven't studied that, or maybe you have, and, and I don't know. But we, given that, we tend to look at the compensating controls, as I mentioned. And the district does, does study that for sure. What are the compensating controls? Maybe Jeff wants to.
Yeah, well, and I understand that. So we had that finding in last year's, we've seen it for however many years. But if you think about it, it was in the report last year, and we actually have reduced one point oh in the finance department. So, so there's all two and a half of us, and we had three and a half, we still had to find it, so. But I think as, as Mr. Eichman says, we have compensating controls in place.
I guess that's more of a comment. I just wanted to thank Jeff and the whole team for helping make sure we could have that timeliness of reporting and providing such a clean audit report this evening. So thank you.
Julie, go ahead.
So for those of us that want the paper copy, if you've never looked at the audit, there is so much data in that report that is so fascinating for the community. It's worth looking at. It's a, it's a trove of information. Thank you.
I think it is also to, to be noticed, the fund balance, as you pointed out, has really, has really gone in the right direction. And I can't, I used to know what the, what eight percent would do for operating, how long we had, if all of the taps were turned off and we just had to to operate having that rainy day fund. I, I seem to remember like three and a half weeks of operating. So if all the state funding, all the federal, all the stuff gets turned off, we have about three and a half weeks. Is that, that's probably about right, Jeff? A month. Yeah, so, I mean, it's, you know, it sounds like a lot, but we do need to make sure we have that adequate fund balance, in case. And we did see this years ago when we had the, the downturn in the economy and the state started metering that money. It got concerning, so.
Jeff has been with us many board meetings, sharing this information. It is a report at this moment on the agenda, and I thank you for the complete report. But it is also later on the agenda, an action item. And with the fact that Jeff is staying late after working all day, I'm wondering if a board member would like to go, go ahead and make a motion to approve the audit at this point in time and take the agenda items a little bit out of order. So the presenters would have the opportunity to leave earlier this evening, I think would be a nice gesture.
I would make the motion.
A second. Moved by Kevin to accept the audit as presented, seconded by Julie. Any other discussion on the audit?
I'll just say, I don't know if you got to see when, when Jim was talking about the timeliness of the report. All of the administrators in the back were also nodding along with how, how Jeff has worked on this and helped us get it done as quickly as possible. So I do want you also to know that we all recognize that as well, because it was, it was really quite something. And it was quite a bit different this year for me with all the federal controls as well. And so it was a bigger, it was, it was a lot more, there was a lot more to it this year than it has been. So the fact that we're here, I do want to recognize Jeff for that too. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff. I, we just, I, at least I have just complete confidence. The, the amount of information you give us leaves no question. We, we hear it every month. So, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the audit as presented, please say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much for making that adjustment in the agenda. Thank you so much for your work, both of you. Thank you, Jim, thank you. So next, we have a report on enrollment and first quarter financials. Look at that, already back into the next.
All right, we are going to jump into the next fiscal year. So Patrick, have I got this here? With Daryl's? All right. Got it. Got it. Okay, so. Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the first quarter of the, of the FY twenty-two fiscal year. So if you look at on the, on the green column there, you see the revised, this is general fund, we're going to look at budget taxuals. So the green column, we show the revised revenue and then revised expenditures. If you look over to, on kind of the blue column, we put percentages there, so percentages received in the current year compared to, compared to a prior year. compared to compared to a prior year, and that's what gives us an indication of any kind of budget variance. So we would say right now, looking at those percentages, we're not seeing any budget variations of of any magnitude in the in the current year. The next slide here looks at. So if we look at those revised revenues, revised expenditures up on top there for for projected audit, June thirty twenty two, revenue over expenditures, four hundred and fifty eight thousand. And then follow that column down, and you can see the various fund balance consequences. So I think I think Mr. Eichen was talking about total fund balance percentages. I'm always talking about you're interested in that on a sign. So if we look at most of that surplus, that four hundred and fifty eight is going to find its way down to the on a sign fund balance. It's going to increase that. So we should. We're projecting now we'll be at eleven point two, three percent June thirty twenty two. What you disturbed from the auditors, I think Jim's slide had ten point seven. I've got ten point six, seven there for for the prior year. So over on the right hand side, maybe I should have you take a look at the assigned fund balance, six thirty. Not twenty one, twenty one. How about six thirty, twenty twenty one? But anyway, that middle column. So the assigned fund balance, one point eight. And we assign some dollars for budget allocations for teaching and learning. We talked about, I think, a lot with the board about eliminating the deficit in Fund Twenty. So I'm just showing we're going to take some of those assigned dollars and use those in FY twenty two. So it's total of eight hundred and sixty nine thousand. So it won't impact the on a sign fund balance, but we'll be reducing that assigned fund balance. Can you see that what we're what we're doing with that? So that'll go down to still over a million dollars. And then again, total on a sign will be eleven point two, three. So above the above the board target of the eight percent. So some of the revisions that we built in, and again, we'll we'll be back. The board is going to have to act on these budget revision. So you approved the budget, I think, back in May. Legislature was still in session. So we had, I believe our assumption was a one half of one percent increase in the formula ended up at at two point four, five. So with, I'm also adjusting enrollment downwards a little bit. But with that increase and enrollment change, that's going to add three hundred and twenty three thousand in the current year. And then we have these additional COVID funds that we're now building into the budget as we've had our applications approved by the Department of Ed. So it's the S R two funds and the, as you were talking about earlier, the testing grant, one hundred and seventy nine thousand and pandemic enrollment loss. So that's to compensate districts for enrollment that was lost last year because of the pandemic. Those are the kind of key elements of increasing the revenue budget in the current year. And it's just a chart of all of our different different federal funds that we're using in the current year. We also have. So there's the, I think we had the, I use the finance code, FIN code, doesn't mean anything to anybody but me. One fifty two, one fifty three. We had those built in the budget. And now, as we've had applications approved by M D E, we're adding the S R two testing grant and pandemic enrollment. Total federal fund. So we we also have federal special education. I think when Mr. Eichen was here, he's talking about a bigger number for Fed, but that would include some of our special ed title programs. I'm just showing the COVID related. So six hundred and twenty nine thousand built into the budget for for the current year. There's S R three funds amounting to about six hundred thousand that we are planning on using the following year. And at this point in time, we have all of our applications approved by M D E. And so we had to put a plan together. They've been approved. And again, we'll use we'll use the S R three in the in the in the following year. And then enrollment. So I'll put the two sides. So preliminary budget. We had anticipated three thousand two hundred and fifty eight average daily membership. We changed that, reduced that by eighteen. You can see the impact on the weighted. So we get paid on the weighted. And so we reduce that from thirty six, ten in the preliminary budget down to the thirty five ninety two. Average class size based on October one enrollment. As you can see, we used to have an X U report that gave us a metro average. I don't think they've done that barb since twenty nineteen. So when we get that, we will add that. You know, I think these would be pretty good class size comparisons.
Yeah, so you know, we've been receiving that X U report for for a long time, and we I noticed in the past couple of times that not as many districts have been submitting their data to that X U report. So it's just something to be aware of that when we look at it, I'm I'm not sure how many. It's voluntary, and so I don't know how many are still using it. So it just is a and an F Y I. And but we did use the numbers from two thousand nineteen to determine because that you know, we have, we have a commitment to our K through five classes being at or below the metro average, and we've used the X U report to determine that. And so that's how we built our K through five, and so they are.
So so the data we just submitted is for current year for twenty two. So I don't know how long that takes the X U to turn that around, but we'll have. It seems like it used to be a year late, but maybe it's going to be current now when we
So it will be. We'll have that in February typically is when we get it, and so we'll be able to compare. But but just so you know, what we always do is we just use the previous year when we're building our enrollment to determine class size. And so we did a version of that again. Six through eight, we use middle school model. Nine through twelve, we look at the the right size study that was done long time ago, maybe that has the twelve hundred. But but still, we do. We do look at class sizes as well when we're we're determining the number of sections for each course. So we thought we'd put it up there.
Okay, questions? Again, I I think when we get the comparisons, these are going to be really good class. So just looking at one, take a look at this enrollment history, and I think, you know, you can see the twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two projected and see the impacts from from COVID. So if you take, if we look at fiscal year seventeen through through twenty, our averages on A D M is three thousand two hundred and seventy two. So you can see how far we fell below that last year. And it's come back a little bit. But we're back to thirty two forty is our projection for for current year. Still a little bit below our average pre pandemic. And then revisions to the expense budget. So if we have COVID revenue, we're going to recognize we will have COVID expenses. So that's our increased staff costs related COVID federal funds. We're adding a one point O in teaching and learning department, some budgeting that for a half a year this year. We've added, I think one of the board members said, we start to spend some of the fund balance. So you see that here, additional staff development funds allocated to sites, sixty six thousand. And then the last one is so when we put together a budget in April, May, we've got the staff that are in place at that time. And so when we get in, we run a couple payrolls in September, October. Now we're going in line item by line item and putting in the actual stat. So there's retirements, resignations, what have you. So that's just reflection of of doing that, doing that work, reduce total costs by one hundred and twenty six thousand. Nonstaff expenditures, pretty much. And you see the federal COVID related testing program, seventy seven thousand. Again, spending some fun balance here. Enhance the mentorship program, thirty five thousand. We did. So we have dollars that are allocated to buildings for supplies. I think one of the principals told me that they haven't changed, and the amount hasn't changed in ten years. So we did a five percent increase across the board. So that added seventy thousand. And then there again are the funds that we're planning to use from from the prior year assigned. Maintenance department allocation, teaching and learning textbooks and the elimination of one twenty deficit. So again, overall surplus of about four hundred and fifty eight thousand. All of that will end up in on a science. Questions?
You're mentioning the testing programs throughout this presentation. Is that in reference to the teaching testing program?
No, no, staff COVID testing.
Staff COVID, yeah, okay. Because
Yeah, yeah. Nicole, it's going to be all staff related.
Because we have the free student testing, we wanted to have something similar for staff, again, encouraging people to stay home with symptomatic, but then have the rapid test so that they know they can come back.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that the dollars there were staff versus when earlier we're talking testing students was a completely separate.
The other thing from our testing program is to also hire additional nursing staff to help with the contact tracing and such. So and that'll be some part time addition to support our our staff.
And that was the staff part of it that you saw under that testing program, staff related expenses.
Can you just explain to me what the enhanced mentorship program is?
Um, I can do as well as as
And maybe
Ken might be like, what?
Talk about the the enhancing the mentorship program.
Could you come to the mic? One of the things that I learned as I came into the district is a desire and a need to really improve how we welcome our new staff in. So it's supporting not only that cohort, but also making sure that we have a defined program for the teachers in our district who support those new teachers by providing some lessons, if you will, on a monthly basis and really increase the level of support that those teachers can provide to the new teachers.
So Jen, will this roll into a mentorship program? Should we need to hire tier one or tier two teachers at some point in time?
Sure.
Oh, great. Good planning. Do you have a follow up to that or? Okay, as long as she's there. Yep. And then go Stacy. Thank you, Kelly.
Was that the area that was a part of the review and that was the return or is this an additional to what are you?
So as I understand it, as the year closed out last year, there were some last minute decisions made about which was the better resource. So that put it into this fiscal year and not into last fiscal year. And so with that, it took a pretty big dollar amount out from this year. And so my hands are a little bit tied to address the needs for this year. And so Jeff is allowing me to respond to teacher needs of resource supports that they may need this year.
Thank you. Stacy?
I have a question back at the basic funding formula. Can you remind me what the two percentages were that we?
You're doing so well, Jen.
The two percentages that we assumed and then what was actual, I just
So, oh, okay. I guess I should have put the assumption the assumption amount down there, but in the but when we had you approve the budget, we were looking at some pretty kind of doom and gloom from the from the state. So we built in. We built in one half of one percent. And we so, you know, I make these assumptions pretty public. They're part of the budget document. So we said, because we didn't know at the time that you have to approve the budget. So we said it would increase one half of one percent. And the second year, we use one percent. So that's going to help next year as well.
Legislature actually pass
In the second
Five and then two.
Two point four, five and two. Yep. And that obviously, as we start building the budget for next year, that's going to help.
Other questions about it tonight? Great. Thank you so much, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have the capital projects levy for technology update.
I keep rolling away from my mic. I'm sorry about that. I this will be a quick presentation. Just this is our last meeting before the vote on the capital projects levy. So we wanted to make sure that we just highlighted a couple of things. May I? Do you want me to click through or? Thanks. There we go. Just as a reminder, this is our our funding amount. The capital projects levy is based on the district's net tax capacity and has not changed since two thousand and two. Our fund, it does fund our student devices, critical technology, infrastructure, training and tech support, and essential teaching and learning tools. And it will expire at the end of this year if it's not renewed. So just as a reminder, we'll lose approximately seven hundred and forty two thousand dollars in technology funny funding, and it does mean maintaining not increasing our existing tax rate. So it's our overview for for the board. I wanted to let you see all of the communication that has gone out to our community regarding the capital projects levy, website, videos, the globe, some printed mailings, including the notice, Facebook post, School Messenger. You can see a number of these article in the White Bear Press. There was the Community Channel interview. So I'm hopeful that the fact that when we had our two community community meetings and we did not have anyone attend, it was because they were well informed about the capital projects levy. Also, if you hadn't seen our teacher testimonial informations about how technology impacts, there've been some pretty some pretty neat testimonials that have been gone out to the community as well. I guess, can you? Okay, perfect. Just as a reminder, it's not too early anymore, but there is early voting. And so those are the places that you can vote. And we have a Q R code about that and just election day information as a reminder as well. It's this November second. So and precincts and polling places are combined. So take note of that as well.
That mean that O H Anderson is not being used.
I know, I know. Yep. So that's but we were ready for it. We were definitely ready for it. So so that was it. I just wanted to do one last plug about the technology capital projects that we we've been talking about it for a very long time now. So just wanted to highlight that. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Sir Barb?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Just a comment that a very nice presentation at White Bear Rotary by Barb and Patrick. It was, I think, the It was, I think, the audience was very engaged in your presentation. So thank you for that.
Testimonials were were very powerful. There were so many. They were great. Next, we're the first reading of policies. You want to take the Sure. So the first group that we have, these are annual policies that we review. And and just to recap, our policy committee did meet to go through all of these already. And so these are coming forward to you from the policy committee. The first group are our annual policies that we review and they have either, they have no changes to them. And so I have those there for you as a list. Some of them we've reviewed in recent recent years because of changes. But this year, there are no changes in that list of policies there are in front of you. So for that list, I'm recommending, we just have two readings. So we read them. We look at them right now and then at our next meeting, we would approve them if you have no changes. So with that, I'll just stop. And that first group of policies, all the reading you got to do. That's great. All right. Next, the second group, these are policies that do have recommended changes. The recommended changes in this group all came through legislative changes and through MSBA. So the changes you see in here are primarily MSBA-related recommended changes. Again, we went through them as the policy committee. And for these, our, what we did is took all of these and the the leadership team members that are responsible for that area go through the policy to see what either what, when they look at the changes, if there are any concerns they have, or if there are any practices that they then know that they need to be able to share with their staff. It's an opportunity to do that as well. So that's our process. And so these are coming to you after being reviewed by the policy committee. And so I don't know if there are any that you would like to pull out and talk about, but we could do that.
Oh, well, I have a question. So does that mean, were there any policy, were there any changes that didn't come from MSBA? After going through that process?
I think at the policy committee, we had a few clarifications that we we tweaked. They didn't change the meaning of the poll and they didn't change anything substantially, but there were some changes in language. Sure, go ahead. So in in statute, there's some language that is no longer true. In statute, they still refer to the licensing division at Pelsby. The license or at the at M D E, the licensing division at M D E merged with the Board of Teaching to form the new board Pelsby, which I serve on. So in statute, it still has the wrong language. And in MSBA's policy, they want to match statute. But if we refer people to the teacher licensing division in M D E, it doesn't exist. And so we did those technical changes. And so as Barb said, that is substantial. But we went to MSBA and said, MSBA, this is wrong. This doesn't exist. And they don't want to change their language until statutory changes. And so now Pelsby is working on statutory language change. But we're deciding to go ahead and fix our policy. So when that policy comes into play, people don't go look for a non-existent department, department of it. So it's that kind of change. Yeah, there are other little ones along. That was the biggest one probably. And there were some others along the way. Person that we found that one.
Well, and your subject matter knowledge on that one.
Any questions on those policies? So what happens? We read them tonight. We pose questions to Barb. Then at the next meeting, if there are questions or things being clarified, Barb brings that back. We do a second reading. And we do this to give the public the opportunity to comment at our meetings. As we did tonight, we had someone comment on one of our policies. And then at the third time, they come to the board and will actually approve them. So this group, we will look at tonight, will get a second opportunity to make comment in November and hopefully approve these in December. Go ahead, Stacy.
About the five twenty-four, it's the technology acceptable use and safety policy. So some of these are interesting additions. Those came from new laws. Is that what you're? It says has a, I don't understand, the school district has a special interest in regulating off-campus speech that materially materially disrupts classroom or involves substantial disorder invasion of the rights of others. What does that mean? Has a special interest?
Can I get, I would have to get back to you on legal. So this is, I will tell you, I know that that is language that I've seen before from our attorney. That phrasing. And so I would have to ask why specifically that's the the language is used. And so
About the cheerleader case from last year from the Supreme Court?
You know, it could be, and I'm sorry, I wouldn't know for Let me ask you, ask about that because certainly you know, the students off-campus speech is related to schools in different ways. And so I'm I'm sure special interest has special meaning, but I'll have to get back to you on that if that's okay. Policies people like to comment on. Here we go on to action items. Thank you, Barb, for all the policies. And thank you, the policy committee. There's a lot of time, a lot of work invested in that. And thank you to all of you who read them and they're not on the policy committee. Took the time. That is our job. Yep. Okay. Under action items, the first one is approval of donations and grants totaling seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I'm looking for a motion to accept grants. By Kevin, second by Tony. Any discussion on those grants? We would like to thank the donors. We will use the money donated and offered through grants to the wishes of the donor to in alignment with our district mission. All those in favor of accepting the donations and grants, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have endorsement of the twenty twenty-one delegate assembly proposal legislative resolution from St. Anthony New Brighton, I S D two eighty-two. This is an item I'm bringing forward. As you know, we had some resolutions that we put forward and we have sent those out to other boards for their endorsement. So they, when they go to the floor at delegate assembly, it's not just from one district. Many others are supporting it. And so far, we have on our resolution, we have East Central Schools, Montevideo Schools and North Brent Schools have all signed on so far. And districts have pretty much till tomorrow to let me know if they want to sign on. And St. Anthony Brighton, a few other districts are looking at our resolution as well. Denise Dietrich sent our resolution or sent me this resolution from St. Anthony Brighton because it was very similar to ours. And now there's been this other conversation that started through email with Denise and Laura, the chair at St. Anthony Brighton, trying to figure out who endorses who and do they both go forward and things like that. And so because the timing of this and it and reading this, it is very similar to what we're, we've put forward. They're looking for that same idea of flexibility in statute in order to do new innovative things in the best interest of students. So I would like to move that we endorse this, knowing that there's a possibility they might withdraw it and endorse ours. But that's gonna play out behind the scenes before our next meeting. And so I'm, I would like to endorse it. And then if it drops off, it drops off. But if it doesn't drop off, it shows that we support what they're working on as well, which is very so much what we're doing. So I'll make the motion to have our board support or endorse that that resolution.
Explain how this differs from the one that was a little more last year?
Oh, you mean our resolution?
Ours didn't get that much support because it was confusing. And so when I saw this, I kind of went back to that and got a little nervous.
Ask me the question again now.
How does this language compare to the one that we submitted last year?
And so that is why Denise is now behind the scenes, coming to both of us because the chair at St. Anthony Brighton reached out to me and said, Denise reached out to me and said, it's very similar to what you're doing. Maybe we want to sign on to yours. Denise jumped in. I mean, the email started last night about nine o'clock, right? And so there's that conversation happening right now. And I think that's the goal is that our resolution, our new resolution is written with a little bit more clarity and example to it because we have the experience of last year where it wasn't clear to people and we had those misconceptions. And so because of that, I think Denise is trying to say, look at this one, why we all support one and have this one fall off. The clarity of language, I can't change what they've written. We can choose not to endorse it if we're concerned about that clarity piece. But all we're doing is putting our name on this if this passes the the vote. So when it goes to the floor at delegate assembly, the delegates know that we support the concept. It doesn't mean our delegates, which is Kevin and I and others in our district, have to vote for to support it. That would be a choice you make at the table after the discussion because it is a grassroots organization and people come up to the mic and share things. So I'm confused by this. I don't support for these reasons. That could change people's minds as well.
And the conversation goes like this very quickly.
Thank you, Kevin.
Since our board is taking a vote. So you or they those did their good St. Anthony take a vote to support ours?
They would like to, but they don't meet again until next week. And so I'm not sure what's gonna happen behind the scenes because Denise had asked me to have all our supporters reported to her by Friday, which is tomorrow. And so that's, I'm not sure how that will play out behind the scenes. If they would take, I think they would probably take it up. I can't speak. I haven't heard them say, yep, we're gonna add to the agenda. The last email I have from the board chair is, but we don't meet till next week. So if Denise says, oh, that's okay, we'll give you a little bit extra time, then they could take it up. I would be hesitant to do that at this point because those other three districts have signed on to language that we with ours. Exactly. But remember what happens with this, this gives direction to the G R team, right? And so last year, our resolution that we put forward went a little too far. And what it was asking for, I think, is we asked for the elimination of instructional hour. And really what we wanted more is redefinition. And so G R team was able to use that to then lobby and the testimony, everything else that came from that was really about more so the redefinition and not the elimination of. And so it's a direction giving piece. It's not exact language. We don't get to write the legislation. We get to put this forward in that way. And so that's why it gets interesting in the language piece, as you're talking about Stacy is what is the intent, right? And their intent is similar to our intent in terms of flexibility. Kelly, go ahead.
So I love you asked that. I was trying to process this. In the, when it talks about this, it says, you know, determines a student is actively engaged in educational process. So it's basically when they're engaged that that could be flexible that it, you know, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Right. So like we talked last year, you could be engaged in service learning. You can be engaged in in different time and space. And that should still count instruction.
I just want to clarify, since I haven't yet been involved with the delegate of assembly of delegates. The idea here tonight is endorsing this keeps, however, the intent of our idea of this flexibility for instructional time. It keeps moving that in that conversation forward. And that's what we're looking for.
So what it does is their board has endorsed this. So therefore, it's already part of the delegate assembly unless they choose to withdraw it. So with or without us, it goes forward. When boards sign on to support, it lets the larger body, the ninety-some delegates in the room looking to come for confirmation number. It's a large number. It lets them know that other districts agree with this. It sends, it's not just six or seven board members on this one board, but other boards across the state support it. So it's a messaging piece.
And there is a potential that both resolutions get to the floor.
They're both
But they're also trying to look for time sake. I'm sure they're trying to minimize that. That's what this behind the scenes talk that you're
Yes, that that's Denise's job behind the scenes. Because some resolutions, they might look at this resolution and say, it's too similar to our resolution last year. Therefore, it's already included in the policy book. So I'm not sure. I have not spoken to Denise. I was at work all day today. I didn't have an opportunity to personally connect with Denise to understand what was happening there with her thinking. Stacy, go ahead and then Kelly.
But there, did you say that we will not withdraw our policy because we have three cosigners?
Kevin had asked if we wanted to rework our language, and I would say that we don't because those three other boards have signed on. I don't think I, unless this board makes action to withdraw it, it's it's there. And I think it would stay there because these other boards have signed on now, even without us at this point. Did you want to clarify that, Kevin, before I go?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a few things. First of all, that we're not passing state any kind of official laws. We're just giving lobbyists or lobbyists a direction to talk to the legislators. I think that's the first thing. But some of the, some of the people come down from wherever and and think that this is, you know, passing laws or not. They're just giving direction to the to the R G A folks. I think the other piece is this, i- if you've never been to one, it's actually kind of fun to watch and there is a place to do that. But these things get, they could get amended. I mean, so this thing could be out there and someone come along and say, well, I'd like to offer an amendment. And then I think, I think we can go three layers into that. And having been the one that has run those meetings, it gets pretty scary pretty fast. But a lot can happen. And I, I mean, I guess my suggestion was is that we give support to this piece and just see where it's gonna go. Because anything can happen at the delegate assembly.
Kelly, just go ahead.
The comment I would add is that it just seems as though this is something that was talked about prior to pandemic that and certainly was seen in action during and after the height of the pandemic. And that schools really measured instructional, think minutes, essentially receipt time. And that is not as clearly defined when you have to be within the borders of a certain mortar space.
Right. Yep. Julie, did you have something else though? Well, I was just gonna say that Denise could come back and say, recommend not pass right at the pre-delegate assembly. And then she would say, because this falls under mod B plus. I mean, that could be what happens is you get the recommendation. So who knows? So going back to process piece, that's a good point, Julie, that they come forward from the boards. But then the G R team goes through them and does background research and other pieces. And then they make a recommendation to the MSBA board that then decide, then the recommendation comes to the floor of pass, oppose, or it's duplication. And so it sounds like behind the scenes talk right now is it's close, but it's not exact. And so I think they're trying to navigate that out and figure that out through this additional conversation that just started last night. If we had more time, I would say we should table it. We don't have time. So I would. We do have motion of four to approve it. Kevin?
The outcome is what we're looking for. So I guess I wouldn't get too concerned with what we're dealing with now.
All those in favor to endorse the
Delegate Assembly Proposal from St. Anthony Burton, please say aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Right, approve the audit. So we're gonna go into committee reports, starting with A M S D. Tony?
We had a wonderful meeting this last month. Four students from around the metro were at the table and they had a student panel. And it's amazing how great students can get to the heart of major issues that are facing education and their schooling. And the big thing that I took away from listening to these wonderful students was the the emphasis and need for connectedness and connecting back into their school and their community. And I just want to commend the the monomaniac approach that we've been taking on, you know, building and forming those relationships with our students. Because that thing was loud and clear from that student panel. Lucy also was able to present as a board member of Pelsby, which is the tiered system for teaching licensure, learnt a lot there. And there's a lot of new legislation that came through in terms of accessing bonuses and other money and funds to get teachers into the teaching profession and working and talking about how we can help promote. And they want to hear from people if there is challenges because they really do want to support teachers moving up those tiers into the teaching programs. Did I cover that?
Okay. Great.
It's hard when the expert's sitting across the table. Other than that, the, you know, things are starting to pick up a little bit on the legislative front. And there's been a lot of changes. So you're gonna need to relook at the leadership from everywhere. Chuck Weger announced that he's not gonna be running So you're going to need to relook at the leadership from everywhere. Chuck Weger announced that he's not going to be running for election again. So there's, it's going to be shifting at the Capitol. So when we get up there for our Capitol Day, we might need to re-study our books. So we know who's who for what committees and whatnot.
I had a conversation with Scott Krunkquist yesterday, the Executive Director. And I had sent him our resolution too, just so he would know what we're thinking. And he will be sending that to the MSD Board to look at for their legislative platform as well. So.
And then lastly, I just want to re-mention the November seventeenth is their conference coming up. So if you haven't made time to go and to attend, I would highly recommend it.
Okay, MAF met on Monday, October eighteenth. And I just need to start by saying that this is a difficult report for me to give. But after consulting with our professional organizations, I feel I have an obligation to share. The meeting began as it usually does with its mission moment given by Stephanie Burwald, our District's Early Education Coordinator. Stephanie provided a detailed overview of ECFP, our preschool, early childhood screening, community outreach, and at-home visits. She detailed how they connected with students during the 2020-21 school year. It was an inspiring presentation. And Stephanie expressed her gratitude for MAF's sponsorship of the Kinder Start Program. Barb and I shared our district update and summary of board work, after which the superintendent left for a family obligation. Teacher grants are now being accepted through January twenty-first, 2022. Catherine Sawyer, the Executive Director of MAF, then announced her resignation. She has agreed to stay on through December. The meeting then had an open discussion. Following is my recollection of the events of that discussion. I reached out to the Executive Director for MAF's board meeting minutes, but she was unable to obtain a copy from the Board Secretary. During this time, the Vice President announced that she believes teachers no longer support MAF because of something related to a campaign for a school board seat. I am concerned about this because MAF plays a critical role in supporting and enhancing district initiatives, as is stated in their mission statement. Our superintendent and the board go to all MAF meetings and share information so MAF members can serve as positive ambassadors for our district. The relationship has been solid and collaborative until recently. And I am deeply concerned about the future relationship with the foundation. The meeting turned hostile towards me as the school board representative, as the Vice President was raising her voice and directing comments toward me. I responded that the discussion was inappropriate and disrespectful. Eventually, I had to leave the meeting. I know that not every MAF board member supports the position of the Vice President because several called me the next day to apologize. The MAF President also called me late the next day to apologize for not stopping the Vice President, but not, did not refute the statement the Vice President made. I encouraged him to reach out to the superintendent to work on healing this relationship. As of this morning, eleven days later, the President has not reached out to the superintendent. Due to the delicate nature and emerging context of this report, tonight is not the appropriate place for board discussion. Please contact the Board Chair for this to be placed on a future meeting agenda.
MSBA. Talked about the resolutions and the Delegate Assembly that is coming up. Nine sixteen.
Short report, actually. We only have one major item here. And so as you know, nine sixteen is a collaborative member districts. And there's a joint powers agreement that is being finalized. And it describes really what happens when a member district leaves. And we did have a member district leave. And so there is this idea to really get this thing firmed up and good. And I know Jeff and Barb and company have looked at this. And what will happen is it needs to have all of the member district boards vote to affirm this new joint powers agreement. So it will come as an agenda item on November's board meeting. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say.
Just, you might recall, we talked about it last year. Was last year when it first came to us. It was pretty cumbersome and complicated. And a number of districts questioned just the, the whole process. And so they have streamlined it and, and made it much, much cleaner. And, and it's very fair. And we've, everyone's reviewed it at this point and feels like it's a, it's a good plan. So.
Getting in the right direction.
Yep. Next, we have school board subcommittee reports. All the Policy Committee met and all the Policy Committee work was on tonight's agenda.
Are there other committees? And then Stacy, until we will go down to table.
Advisory Committee met and we met on October fourth. We had fantastic first fall kickoff meeting with, I think we had sixteen people in attendance of parents, teachers, administrators, school board members. Jen did a fantastic job leading us in our first meeting. And we got this really great District Curriculum Advisory Committee handbook where we talked about sort of our roles and responsibilities and what that would look like. And we explored that together. We then spent the bulk of the time taking a look at the district's World Best Workforce Report that we looked at tonight and provided some feedback to Jen about her wonderful infographics that she had created and making that clear and easily readable for people who are going to access that information. And so we can take deeper dives into that data. So we were looking at that. And then we did a little bit of a learning walk and we walked around the room and we were looking at some of our current goals and gave input as to maybe some future action steps to help us make progress towards those goals. And had some great conversations in small groups. And then everybody got a chance to walk around and look at everybody's feedback with those goals. And then all of a sudden, the time flew by and our meeting time was up. We probably could have stayed another two hours, but it was a great first meeting. And I look forward to the next ones. It was a well-represented group from community members, parents, teachers, administrators. And I was there representing the school board and Tony was there as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So the gifted and talented advisory committee met. And I unfortunately was not able to be there, but I heard really good things. And Jen provided really good follow-up notes. So she really set a good tone from my understanding and really explained that the group is advisory in nature. Not making decisions, but really allowing a, a place for parents to come together and, and understand the program better, understand the gifted child better. She provided current program feed or asked for feedback on the current programming. And also provided information to help parents who are raising gifted kids, which I think is a really great resource to have. And also she has ready-made lessons for enrichment. And as many of you know, I am a strong believer in enrichment. And I love that there's, there is now some ready-made packets that can just be handed to teachers who really want to bring enrichment in a new way. And that's it.
Thank you.
And the Community Education Advisory Council met on October twentieth. We welcomed the new member Chloe Bromland and Mark Jackson from St. Andrews. Kate was happy to report that she is back to a full staff in Community Education Office. It's very exciting for her. We had to elect a chairperson and this year that will be Sarah Danforth. Kate reported great, robust summer community ed programs. Many classes ran at full capacity. Especially highlighting music where I believe she hired both a new piano teacher and a new guitar instructor, just piano. Okay. But guitar interest was way up. Okay. And food trucks, food truck Fridays were smashing, as Kelly has shared. And Tony, both of them. Just the same as the entire country is experiencing, Kate is experiencing a staffing crisis at MAC. And she is currently at higher numbers of students enrolled than, than with COVID. And so if you know anyone who's interested, please send them her way. Adding some, some youth athletic classes and wrestling and introduction to swim is very exciting. And the Fall Lego Leagues, nine kids are signed up. I think Stacy's kids are participating. And super exciting, Alice is going to start a Zephyr Influencer Program. So we are all excited to see Alice create Zephyr Influencers. Photography and social media and possibly a cooking class in the future. So let's see. We'll probably be starting day trips soon for the senior adults. First one to the Osceola Train. To the Osceola Train and Sidekick Theater. The winter and spring brochure should be live on December thirteenth. So keep your eyes open for that. Kate's budget came in very good and she is grateful for the chargeback from the district. It was generous and helped the budget come and stay, stay afloat during a very hard year. So she is looking at having community lunches again. So they might not be as big as possible, but everyone loves that. There's going to be a Christmas one. Not the Silver Singers, but who's going to be the, a high school? Okay. 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 And there's discussion about service learning opportunity offerings through community ed. So Kate has a lot going on. Wonderful. Kevin?
I just also wanted to mention something that came through Community Ed a couple of weeks ago. We had Kao Kalia Yang, who is noted author, speaking on her book, Somewhere in an Unknown World, which documents immigrants coming to Minnesota from various places of the world. And I don't know how many people were there, but there was quite a few. And it was one of the most touching, warm, interesting evenings that I've spent over at Chautauqua with, with her telling these stories. They were pretty amazing. So thank you for that. Okay.
I also just wanted to quickly share that I had a chance to visit Wildwood Park. And it was really great to see our kids obviously functioning as normal as possible in this timeframe. But just as if my takeaway from that morning was, I was so impressed with the ways that our teachers are making those classrooms feel so welcoming with everything. I mean, I was a secondary teacher, so I guess I don't have the bulletproof word in me. I guess that's not my story.
But the, just how welcoming those classrooms were the, you could tell the very purposeful relationship building with kids and their families on, on classroom walls and things. And the student work that was present. It was really great to see all of that. It just felt very welcoming walking in and around all those classrooms. So it's really fun to see. And it's also fun to see Barb helping kids as they're. On at that one point, they were, you were helping them with their, their math and they.
Oh, yeah. If it's math, I'm ready. I'm in. Yeah, I don't remember.
I'm just going to echo that. I've, I've actually been fortunate to visit all the buildings across our district here in the last number of weeks with Barb. And I do appreciate all the invites allowing board members to come walk through this halls with you. It's the student engagement and the teaching and what are, what's happening in the buildings is, did nothing short of amazing. All the way up to, I think, Wednesday this week, it was Passages Program. And if you have not had an opportunity to go in there and spend some time seeing that program, it is always worth the visit. So. But I will carry on. There's not so many good stories, but I know it's late and we all probably want to leave.
That is our last agenda item, our board report. So I'm looking for motions to adjourn, please. Thank you, Stacy. Moved by Stacy, seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries were adjourned.